Call the meeting to order and let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, all directors are present, welcome back Mr. Rossi. And that brings us to executive session announcements. There will be an executive session for labor negotiations with the non-professional staff immediately following the board meeting. And that moves us to public comment. Do we have anybody here who would like to make a public comment? I have no forms, but raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Or forever hold your peace. Okay, let's move to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Benowitz. A couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention today, but I do want to make a comment. We spent the lion's share of today and yesterday engaging in district learning walks. This was our first launch of this concept that I've been trying to get going for the last couple of years and thanks to Mr. Voorhees, he helped me bring this to fruition. And I have to tell you, it was a fantastic experience. We put together, he put together with his team, a survey instrument, so to speak, that we used for the walkthroughs, but it was focused specifically on what the building principals wanted us to look for. And the building principals met with their staff and they came up with what we should look for. So at lower on Monday, we were looking at some of their questioning techniques and we were in different classrooms and recording some of the questions that the teachers asked and also that the students asked the teacher and the level of thinking that went in in the Blooms taxonomy that was used in determining those questions. And then we looked for themes of what we saw because again, this wasn't to pinpoint a particular teacher, but rather to look for themes across the building of things that they were looking at implementing. And then, and then we brought the themes out, drew the themes out and then Daniel put together a report that we just, he just submitted back to the building and then it's the intent of the building principal to take that back to her staff and have conversation with them about what they were, you know, what their strengths are and what some areas for growth are in terms of the building in general and that particular focal area. Today, we did the same thing at Ringing Rocks and it was a, you know, very refreshing day and I had an opportunity to make text-to-self connections with a group of first graders when I, they were reading about a moose and I actually had a picture of the moose that we had found when we were in Wyoming. And so it was really great to be able to engage the students and for them to say, "Oh, you made a text-to-self connection, Ms. Fiola." And so, just so, there's some things that are happening, I think, that are, we should be really proud of. And I asked the two teachers that were involved today at Ringing Rocks what they thought of this and I have to tell you, they couldn't, they couldn't say enough positive things about what they learned in engaging in this and being able to say, "Oh, my gosh, that teacher really did X well." Or the way she set up her, you know, her word walls, "Oh, this teacher, you know, I really liked the way the students understood the transitions, they were seamless." So, just for them to be able to see each other and what's gone on and be able to report out on areas of strength and then also areas, really, I wouldn't say weaknesses, but areas of inconsistency perhaps, and where we can use strengths of one teacher to help with not a strength of another and vice versa. It just was very nice. And we have three other district learning walks scheduled for the upcoming weeks in the other buildings, so I can keep you posted on that information. And I'm sure Daniel's probably going to share out the strengths and weaknesses, or we'd be happy to, of the buildings and what they're working toward. So that, that's what we were doing the last two days. And my first discussion item was about the calendar. And you have a copy of a calendar in your packet that I sent home with you on Friday and we were still working through this and I told you I wanted to vet this through the administrative cabinet to see if we had caught everything. And also, I always work with the teachers' union when I'm putting together a calendar. And they really liked the calendar that we have here and the recommendation obviously is to start after Labor Day, particularly because of the high school renovation project that allows us another full week to ensure that we're ready for opening. It's similar in nature to the calendar that was on the docket this year that ultimately was approved. We have some built-in snow days, as you can see, similar to what we did this year, that worked out very well for us. The one suggestion that was made by both an administrative principal who, who works in a K-2 building and also by our union was that we might want to consider on this current calendar that you have in front of you, and I'll pass the option out, I call it Option B, but it's essentially to put a half-day on December the 23rd so that students would dismiss it at the half, as would teachers. Twelve-month employees would obviously work the full day, but then instead, at the very end in June, only have two half-days for students. So, you'll see the difference when, when I pass it out to you. So, essentially, historically in the Pots Grove School District, we've always had three half-days at the very end, one of which contractually, the teachers get to leave as, at a half-day too, because they came in and did a half-day in August. In this scenario, we're suggesting putting the half-day on the 23rd because we know families, you know, that are traveling at the holidays and you know how all the holiday hoopla is going on anyway on that very last day with the sing-alongs at the K-2 buildings and so on. So they could actually have a half-day on the 23rd, would be, enable those families to get going, but then in June, we'd have a full day on the 12th of June and then a half the 13th and a half the 14th. And then that would still give us two more days in that week for snow days like we had this year and then some of them would then go back into the calendar. So that's really the main difference and then the other difference that, that we, we wanted to do is not have the, we wanted to move one of our staff development days from the beginning to intersperse it back into the calendar where it had been in the past because we felt like having more than two and a half days at the beginning was too much for teachers to really get the full benefit out of that for them. So we wanted to intersperse that back into the calendar, which we did, we put it in October. You'll see it in October. So our, our recommendation would be Option B, which is the one that I passed out second, but also Option A is suitable. And all of the parties that were involved in, so far in review, thought they were good options and obviously, you know, we can listen to the board's recommendations and post whatever you'd like for public review and you can vote on it next meeting or whenever you'd like, but I wanted to get something in your hands.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about Option A or Option B? I have some, but I figured I'd wait till, see if you folks say it first.
I just want to ask one question. I know you discussed this, I believe, last year. Is there a reason why we always have to have the first options for the snow days at the end of the year?
Well, because typically what happens when there, when there's too many that are built in is we have staff members and we have families that make commitments to do things and then we don't have adequate coverage and we have high rate of absenteeism during those days because families have made plans to do certain things and that's why, and if you look in others, I should have mentioned this too, but I, I did a lot of looking at other school districts' calendars and typically they build days at the end and then some then are always, also built in. I think I did, um...
You have some.
The other thing I did change on this calendar for next year, I forgot to mention, is at the very bottom, you see the verbiage I wrote, "Make-up days beginning on the second day in which classes are canceled." Meaning, we have 181 days, student days, built into our calendar, but the law, the code only requires 180. And I saw this language in another district's calendar, so in other words, they built in some days into their calendar, but then if they need them, then that, those are the days they use first. So in other words, our first snow day could really be the 181st day. So we could still end on the 13th or the 14th, as it stands here, and have a snow day. You see what I'm saying? And so I put that verbiage in because typically I would come back to the board and then I'd say, "Would you like to pardon that day?" And then we'd have to make a motion and this way, it's right up front for the parent. They know, "Oh, the first snow day is, is a given because that's built into the calendar." The other way, school districts build it into the calendars, I could, I could build it in so we don't end till the 16th, let's see then the days are in the calendar, but we've chosen just to say upfront, "We're trying to get out on the 14th, but you need to hold these two days." And that typically works better for us in terms of getting, making sure we have enough, our staff and our students that aren't at a high rate of absenteeism.
Just a question, we're off, proposed to be off the 21st of October and the 1st of November. Is it, would it be more, would it be benefits to having the Friday and the immediate following Monday for those that want to go away for a few days or is there, is there other reasons to keep it separated like this?
Well, we, we've thought about that also and sometimes what happens is, then we have teachers that aren't there and if the purpose is for professional development, then you want your staff to be there as well. And also, when there's large blocks of time, sometimes the students get a little antsy so we try to keep them on track. So those would be the two reasons. I mean, there's certainly no reason we couldn't do it, but I think those would be the two reasons that we've discussed before as problematic or maybe why you wouldn't want to.
Just to go with Bill's, and I don't know if this is re, could you have, again, I don't know, because they're both staff days, could, would it be beneficial to the staff to have two in a row, like in other words, October 31st and the 1st? Because they're staff days, right, the 21st and the 1st?
They're staff days. Well, yeah.
Is that a bad idea? I mean, having two days in a row to work on something rather than a day and then wait and then another day?
I hear what you're saying. I don't know if it's a bad idea, but what we found last year when we tried to put too many together at the beginning is the teachers got burned out and then, and they acquired a concept or they were working on something and then they wanted to get back in and put it in practice and sometimes when you have too many days. And the other piece is, what, what happens when we try to roll out an initiative or work on something, you know, they want to apply some of it and then they, they need time later to go back and revisit it. Like for the Lucy Cockens writing, you know, in elementary level, they're, they're doing some things and then they're implementing and trying and then if we don't have any days periodically through, then you can't touch base with them and make sure things are going well. So that's why we kind of like try to spread them out somewhat.
Well, I'm thinking the kids would certainly like having Halloween off, but...
Teachers might like it too, I don't know.
Well, I mean, if it's a staff day, then...
We can move to 30th.
I mean, I, I'm ambivalent on it. I mean, I hear what you're saying though, I mean, spreading them out has, you have a rationale for it. I like the, the second one you gave. I mean, the, the three half-days at the end of the year are generally a waste from an academic perspective. So cutting it back down to two and then adding that half-day on the 23rd when families, many families are traveling, seems to me to be, be a great idea. And, and, you know, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I would, if we're going to post one of these calendars as-is, I would want it to be the second one, the one you just passed out. Is the only other issue, I'm fine with it as it is, but, but if others feel that we should consider sandwiching these two staff days together in 31st and 1st, then I'm fine with that as well. I mean, I was joking about Halloween, but that's just timing. I mean, obviously, we're, the 1st is, is election day and it's presidential election year, so, you know, it's going to be a busy day for a lot of people. So, it's good that they're, the kids are off actually, I think, on that day. It's up to you folks, I mean, you know, I, we don't need a motion right now, right? We just need some direction for the, for the administration as to what to...
Yeah, it's up to you. I thought you'd want to post it just to let, if you had any feedback from the community.
I was just going to suggest along those lines, Ms. Fiola, what about, is this something we could poll the staff, saying the thoughts, the concerns, you know, about the two days together versus two days apart?
Well, that's why I take it to the teachers' union because she meets with the leadership team of the union, so that's how we get our feedback from the staff.
Okay. And also to, yeah, to post it and then see what feedback we get from parents, I'd like to get their thoughts on the, the whole thing, but also those two days together or two days separate.
Parents won't give us feedback unless we put the two days together because they won't know that it's an option or unless they watch this and we know we get very high watching of these board meetings. So, why don't we just post this as-is and see what the comments are, but we'll, we'll keep thinking about whether we want to make that change and, you know, would it be possible to go back to, to, to the, to the union and just ask if they would have a preference between those two options?
I think we can ask, I just think in the, in the feedback that we've gotten before, you know, then that's, that's the reason that we sat there and did that, but I have no problem going back and asking them.
I just ask one more quick question. When you got the 1st of September, is the, obviously the staff day and then you got the 21st and then you get the 1st, it's like three in a row, boom, boom, boom. Was there any thought to move them, one of those to like December, beginning of December, so you had them spread out so like you could do what you said?
Well, yes. Well, we can't put, we don't want to put one of the ones at the beginning somewhere else because then what you're doing is you're making the student year longer. You see, because that's before students come back. So the 30th, the 31st and the 1st is all before students come back, so we don't want that in the calendar or it'll lengthen the school year for the kids. But I, I know what you said about the other days and the reason that we have nothing in December is essentially because that's when all of the festivities and things happen, you've got concerts. It's really hard to get all of that in in those two weeks or, you know, two and a half, whatever. So that's why there's nothing in December. I mean, we can certainly move it down a week, but then, isn't the 1st, is that the election? Yeah. A lot of other districts have that same day as a professional development day or they're not there, but typically a professional development day. Yeah, I know. And then, and then sometimes we have overlapping things like with, for en-cour teachers at the IU or, so that's why that one's there. We just, we couldn't figure out a better way to... Yeah, I know, I hear what you're saying. And we could move it back the week before in October if you think it would be...
Mark just looked up for us. Appears that election day this year is not the 1st, but is the 8th.
It's always the first Tuesday after the 1st Monday.
I would recommend switching the 1st to the 8th.
Yeah, I think that was the plan. I think it was an error, so thank you for catching that. And, yeah, you are, you are. And so that solves the problem, I think, because it's the extra week anyway, so...
So I'm going to do Option B with a little change.
Right.
And then our second discussion item, Mr. Hannis here from Dewey Engineering, just to give you a quick update about the renovation project.
One thing I wanted to point out, I always have this as my lead slide and these are actual digital images, they're not photographs of, of the completed work, so I think everything came out pretty much like we expected. It's pretty interesting, isn't it? Moving on to what's been going on inside the building, these rooms, the social study rooms are, are complete and Jeff has had his staff stocking, they're occupied now? Moving in. The other part is the guidance office and I'll show you some photos of that. Looking forward, beginning in March 1st, we're going to start working in the purple area. And we had a very good meeting on Monday with all the contractors and Jeff was there and Dr. Ziegler was there on how we're going to isolate this area to prevent it from being a nuisance to your staff. So, we had a very good meeting on Monday and it seems like we got a good plan moving forward. And then, looking further ahead, the auditorium and the DAO, we're going to start April 4th after the change order we agreed to and everybody's been preparing to start that work. And then, as the summer comes, we'll be back into this brown area and working on the outside. So, we're, and, and in the, in the main office. So, we're coming to a conclusion. Looking at the finished product in the social studies room, you could see that the casework's in, floor's done, window shades are up, color on the wall, here you can see the floors have been waxed. The projectors are up, whiteboards are done, you know, they're ready to go. Guidance office, this is the main corridor through the guidance office with the offices on the right-hand side. This is the, the main entrance in there will be the reception desk and a nice wall behind it. And then, going to the outside, this work wasn't supposed to start till March 1st, but the, the contractors decided it was probably a good time to get going, they cleared the snow, this is where the turf field's going to go. So they got started on that, they got one of the infiltration basins in, you can see it here. Now infiltration basin is a way we, we manage stormwater. The water's going to go into this stone and then infiltrate and recharge the ground. And there are several of them around the, around the turf field. You won't notice them once they're done, but they're serving a very, very good purpose. Here you can see they're, they're putting one in, as of, this picture was taken yesterday, this one's pretty much complete. And one thing Ms. Field asked me to do is go over some of the roofing, the progress of the roofing. We've, we've all been tracking some leaks we had after the 30-inch snow and the heavy rain, we've identified them. On Saturday, there was quite a, quite a large crew here between roofers, the general contractor was here, the roofing manufacturer was here, as well as one of our staff members going through identifying the leaks and having them fixed. But, but what I wanted to start with is just give you a kind of an idea of what the roofing system you have. You have what's called a two-ply built-up modified hybrid roof. It has two plies of a built-up sheet that's hoted here over top of a recovery board and five inches of insulation on your case. And then there's a white cap sheet that goes on top of that. This roof is a 20-year warranty roof. You get a manufacturer's written 20-year warranty. And to do that, the manufacturer inspects the roof as it's being installed and they do a final inspection and provide a written warranty. Now, that doesn't mean you get a roof put on and you forget about it for 20 years. You have to maintain it, he's going to come by and do some inspections. So what our job at this phase is to make sure that we keep the roofing manufacturer informed of what we find and we have been, and to try and make sure we don't have any problem areas that are going to be costly for you to do the concurrent maintenance you have to do to maintain the warranty. So, I didn't have time to get this into your board packet, but I had a little plan. Can you please help me? Hand them down, so you could follow along with what I had. I, we've numbered the leaks. Now, most of these leaks are drips. And, you know, after 30 inches of snow and, and heavy rains, blowing rains, you know, you're going to get drips, especially on a new roof. It's kind of like sending a ship on its maiden voyage. Now, some of them are more, some of them have been leaks where we, there were damaged tile and wall leaks. So if you can follow along, I'm going to take you through one by one what we found, starting with number one. So number one is right here over the engineering lab and this is what it looks like. It doesn't have the final cap sheet on because there are some units that have to be replaced that service the purple area that we're getting into. So we couldn't put the cap sheet on until we get those units removed and the roof can be filled in and he's going to put the cap sheet on. What he found here was, there's still a lot of traffic on this roof from workers going up there doing what they have to. There were some holes through the, through the base sheet that they, they patched and they flood coated this and as of today, we haven't had any leaks. We got a drip in the 400 corridor that we think is coming from the, one of the rooftop units. So, and that could just be a screw that's, that's missing or something, we'll go up there and, and try and find it. If we can't, we usually get a hose up there and hose it down and then we find it. The second one is by the cafeteria and we believe it's right around this column here. There was some caulking that could have been put in there and some openings and with 30 inches of snow, you can imagine it was probably up to here. So, that, that's been repaired and as of today, and we'll know tomorrow with the rains coming in, we'll find it, you know, if we did. But this was just a drip. The other thing, we had a couple drips at several of the rooftop units, number three, number eight, number nine on your sheet and it's not unusual when you get a driving, blowing snow that some snow could get blown into the intake of the air handling unit and overwhelm the condensant pan in there. So, we kind of think that's, these have never leaked before, but during the snow, we had a leak. And it was just a drip. So, so it's just something we'll maintain, but that's what we believe that was. Leak number four, this is a hard picture to see, sorry about that, is along this wall here, this is the cafeteria addition. There's some odd and unique flashing areas there and we're trying, we're working with the manufacturer to come up with the best way to flash this. And, and we're going to have that, God bless you. We'll have that when we resume roofing at, at the, end of school. And then, and then the rest of these, five, six, seven, 10 and 14, is in the old roof that, that hasn't been replaced yet. This is what's called a single ply roof, EPDM single ply. If somebody drops a tool on this or walks across it, it'll puncture the roof and you got a leak. And we, the, the roofer found many of those and patched them. The other thing I wanted to point out is, this is the science addition and as you can see, that, that old roof had to get cut out to build the new lab addition. And a lot of this that's on here that you, you know, it's not very well shown on this photo, is temporary patches. So, so it's a lot of temporary patches that, that, you know, all in all, they're holding up very well, they didn't hold up the 30 inches of snow, but this one, this leak was over the music area. Now, this was a, this was a leak that damaged quite a bit of tile in the, in that, in that music room. And this is an existing clear story that came down and the new roofing was rolled up underneath that, if you could picture that. And what the manufacturer and the roofer thought, and I kind of agree with them, is that this snow came down the roof and backed and it was really mound up here and backed up and came in, kind of like a dam. So, so what they did was they put a termination bar here, this silver bar. They put a termination bar there and redid some of the work there. They found a little cut in here that they repatched too. So I, I kind of think that handled it. This is one of the, this is a detail, we have several areas around the, around the building, we have one over the DOA. And we reviewed this before we even began roofing and I asked that question and they thought it would be okay without the termination bar, but it seems, you know, they said if it does leak, we'll put the termination bar on, so they did that. And I, and I just want to say that when we discovered these leaks, I mean, you know, we all, we've dealt with some roofing issues for quite a long time, but when we notified the contractor of these issues, they responded quickly, as did the roofing manufacturer. And, and like I said, we had a pretty big crew here on Saturday to, to address these issues. So that's pretty much it. Anybody got any questions?
Yeah, concerning the auditorium?
Yes.
Have, have you, has anyone checked for asbestos in the ceiling?
Yes, yes. That was, that was done by an independent consultant who went through the entire building prior to work and identified areas of asbestos and that's one of the first activities that I'll be... first activities that'll be done when we get in the auditorium, is asbestos abatement. And most of it's on the floor tiles.
So, it's gonna be done while students and staff are in the school?
It'll be done in a contained area with negative pressure. It's not unusual that it's done that way.
Okay.
That, when I say negative air, that the air is being sucked out. It's a negative pressure. If you went in there with a cigarette, it would be sucked out right away. So, and there's constant air monitoring as they do that.
Speaking of air monitoring, there was apparently some air quality issues earlier in the week.
I don't know if they were air quality issues. They had a hygienist in who did some air quality testing.
The district had its third-party environmental scientist to come out on precautionary measures from back in December's when we found high fungal spores in the air. So, the space that Jim spoke about in the social studies area, before we reoccupied this space, we had the air quality done, and everything came out passing. There was no issues with any mold spores, fungal spores, or dust particles in the area where construction and around the area. So, we checked in the 100 wing, just beyond the containment wall, going into the science part of the social studies work. So, that's why we waited until we got that information before we started to reoccupy the space. So, tonight, our staff is moving materials back into the space because we got the green light that we can occupy that area.
So, the issues from Wednesday, is that what you're talking about, Wednesday morning?
No, so there was no, no issues of air quality in the space at this moment here when we had the testing done. We had the testing done as precautionary because back in early December, there was a smell of mold that we detected when the construction started. So, we went, we meaning the construction team in the district, went in ahead of time to look at if there was any air quality issues from us disturbing the walls and the floor. We found a high count of fungi, fungi, excuse me, spores, not mold spores. So, we did a negative air pressure scrubbing of the air in that area, got passing results back from the environmental scientist. We followed up just this Friday with a secondary testing because it's now been 60, 70 days or so forth. We wanted to make sure that the work that we did didn't cause any issues or there were no issues in the space. So, we passed the results for us to occupy the space there. So, some staff had thought that there were air quality issues on Wednesday, so happened we had already had exams scheduled for Friday to take place, and we got our results back late yesterday.
Oh, I was under the impression that a test was done on Thursday, Thursday afternoon. There were problems Wednesday morning, and then there was a test on Thursday afternoon.
No, so the testing was done, and I could be wrong. It's Thursday or Friday. I forget which day. It was Thursday. It was late Thursday.
So, that wasn't in, that wasn't due to the issues? Because that was an already-planned test?
No, that was already planned. Once the project was done, to have the environmental scientist who did the preliminary testing to come back to make sure that we conduct ourselves in a good manner with the air.
Okay. All right.
But it's just something like Jeff and I can add. I know you've been doing testing before we occupy any space. It's just a certain procedure that they, that they've been doing.
One more. Have you checked, has, have you checked for lead paint in, in the auditorium or anything? I know you found some in the, in the cafeteria.
Yes. The independent consultant has come in and checked for lead paint.
And?
There's not gonna be any welding or any disturbance of steel structure in the auditorium. So, we don't have to worry about that issue.
So, that won't, I'm just, I just don't want it to set us behind. I mean, honestly, I was a little surprised when the lead paint remediation set us behind because, I mean, if a building's built before 1978, there's most likely lead paint in it somewhere. So, I was really surprised that someone didn't go, you know what, let's just add that in. There's gonna be lead paint found somewhere in this building because of its age.
Well, they did, they did do lead paint. That's an independent consultant, and he did do that, and he didn't check the joists on the steel. Because normally, you don't find it in the primer on steel.
So, I'm sorry to belabor this point, but if I just heard you correctly, you're saying that even if there is lead paint in the auditorium, as long as it's not disturbed, we don't do anything about it?
That's correct. It's not a hazard unless it's disturbed. Lead paint is not a hazard unless it's disturbed.
Okay.
And that's not my call. That's the consultant.
Right. Just real quick, a comment. You know, I think we've come a long way from when we first started and we had all these, you know, back and forth issues. I just wanna say, I think, you know, the comment you made about the contractors jumping on the roof leaks, thank you for saying that, because I did drive by, and this place has been just a flurry, and I think we're on the right path.
I think so, too.
And I really appreciate the updates, and I, like you, you made a little comment. I don't know how many caught it, but we're coming to that point, and it's a good feeling.
Yes.
It's a good feeling. I was skeptical at first, but very happy with the progress and the direction that everybody's come together. So, thank you for
Thank you.
...everything you've done so far. I was only in the beginning. It was very difficult.
It was difficult.
It was very difficult.
But I think we've gotten used to each other.
Yes, that's a good way to put it. Thank you.
Do, do we have a targeted last day of construction?
We do. It is August 25th. It is August 25th. Does that mean you won't see somebody dropping around, touching up some paint, probably, you know, but that, yeah.
For the first year of the project, I asked you if we were on time. And for the, from now until the end, I'm gonna ask you, are we still on target for August 25th?
I would think so. I think with your help and your foresight to move some of the phasing around, I think it's made it a lot easier. It's made it kind of a level flow. It's not a, you know, that kind of flow. I feel good about it. I think, you know, you need to be commended for that, for your helping to accommodate that.
I had one quick question. I understand, because we start at the turf field area.
Yes, yes.
I understand there's some new legislation that's gonna be coming out very soon or within the next year because of, obviously, hot topic concussions and stuff, and underlay, and a certain thickness of underlay has to be placed under the field. Are we prepared for that? Because I don't wanna have to not meet qualifications in two years from now.
You're asking a question I'm not sure I can answer right now. I will find out for you.
Do we have an underlay scale?
There's not an underlay. You have a base that goes on there. You might call it an underlay. Is it a fabric underlay? No, but it's the thickness of the turf and the rubber, depending on what the field's used for. If the field's used mainly for football, the turf would be higher, and there'd be more cushion content in it. If it's used for soccer or field hockey, it's not gonna have as much cushion in it.
I would ask the board to consider looking into that.
I will get the answer and find out for you what exactly we have.
I had one other item that I wanted just to reiterate to you, and I know you received a memorandum articulating the issue, but this has to do with the gifted program, and I just wanted to kinda summarize my memo, because it's been a couple of weeks. But essentially, you're aware that we had a gifted quality review that was a multi-year process in terms of the recommendations that were made. And that review came out right at the time where we were changing of the guard for the people's services department in terms of the people's services director retiring and the supervisor of special education moving on for another opportunity. So, we had a little bit of a lapse in being able to implement some of those recommendations with that change in staff. And then, from that, our new people's services director had picked out certain pieces to be working on. However, in, along with that, I heard from some of you and some parents about some concerns with the gifted program at the high school, and so I wanted to take some time to investigate that and to kinda look at what was happening there. And I think from my investigation, if you wanna call it that, and talking with our teachers and our staff at the high school and looking at what had happened in terms of our personnel changes at the teacher level, we certainly had, you know, a veteran teacher who had that program running quite well. Not that it didn't need some renovations per the gifted quality review, but it was in a, in a good place. And then, when she went out on a medical leave a year and a half ago, and we thought she would be coming back but did not come back, we have two long-term, or a long-term sub in her position, and we had a teacher who had never taught gifted before picking up the pieces for the other part of the gifted program. And in that, I think there was some need for some additional support for those persons, and also to really take a look at the programs that are being offered at the high school and see if we can do a better job and do a better, better job for our students that are there. And so, I'm recommending to you that you consider allowing me to contract service with, service with the seasoned personnel services administrator to really focus on just a special project for a limited amount of time, and that would be to provide immediate support to our high school teachers of the gifted, and also to work with the high school teachers of the gifted and articulating back through the middle school, because we have a cohort of students that are coming up from the middle school, and we, I wanted to make sure that we were meeting their needs. And I don't think that the current programming that's in place right now at the high school will meet their needs, and I'm asking for you to consider allowing us to add a course and develop a course for gifted ninth-grade English Language Arts, having looked at what those needs are and spoken specifically with Mrs. Froska, our gifted teacher at the middle school, and develop that course, but at the same time have this contracted service person who's a seasoned administrator work on developing that course, but also looking at the independent study opportunities and the previously-employed philosophy seminar, and seeing what should be the recommendation in terms of beefing up or enhancing our programming at the high school, and then working with those teachers at both the middle school and the high school level to develop what those should look like so that we're doing a better job for our students. And then also, if time permits, but also on the docket, I'm not sure if it would be this person or continuing with Dr. Roberts, is getting back into looking at the cohesiveness K through 12, going from the high school back to the middle school to the elementary school. And so, the recommendation that I asked is for Sylvia Sanfilippo Cone to come and work with us for, not to exceed $22,000. It would be $80 an hour for approximately two days a week, so that we could address this in a timely manner, because I really feel like, though it's on our list of things to do and it is part of the gifted program review to do this, it wasn't on the, on the docket for this year. But because of some of these unintended consequences, I really feel like it, we're doing a disservice to our students if we don't address it sooner than later. And to do it justice, I think we need someone who's just focused on this project.
Shelley, could you also just, you shared a budget sheet with us on this. I mean, I could, I think I have the numbers in my head, so why don't I just try it, and then you can correct me if I've got the numbers wrong. This year, we had budgeted for the gifted support teacher position in the high school. Was it 80 or 90? It was $90,000. And between the long-term sub that just recently left and the new long-term sub that's been hired, our total spend this year will be $50,000. So, we're $40,000 in the black as it relates to that particular line item on the budget, and therefore, if we approve hiring Sylvia, then that 22 still keeps us $18,000 below what was budgeted for the year, just for the teacher position alone, even though technically, she's not a teacher. So, I just wanted to make that, that clear to the rest of the board. And I have some comments on this, but I wanted to let the rest of you say what you wanted to say. So, anybody?
Yeah. I wasn't here the last couple times, so I've had to look at this on my own and ask others. And actually, Rick, with what you just put out there, it's helped me even more. I think the bottom line here is, I think we, with this issue, which is very important, all issues are very important, but this is a need quickly that we have to, we have to put forward. I think it's prudent that we take the administration's advice on this and move forward. Rick, I agree with your assessment on the numbers. It's not going to hurt us in any way here, and I think it's a positive step forward to rectify an issue that we have that we need to do. And like I said, I've had a look at this on my own the last week, week and a half, and I've come to the conclusion that I think we need to support this issue right here, as it's written.
I just had a question. The cohort that's coming up through eighth grade to ninth grade, are they the first cohort that's had this issue with the E L A?
I would say probably not. What I found through my investigation of this is that a few years ago, a couple of years ago, we had a philosophy seminar class that we no longer, we stopped offering, for whatever reason, and what I found out was the teacher wasn't certified to teach it. So, instead of bringing that to the administrative's attention, somehow it was just dropped from the course guide when we have other teachers that would've been certified to teach it. So, I think that that was probably an offering that was robust enough to give them some opportunities, but we don't offer that right now. The other piece of this is for our AP course offerings, we only offer, we, there only are two AP course offerings in English Language Arts area. And so, if the student was that far advanced that they were taking an AP course in the ninth grade, which we do have a few that are really ready for that now in their area of interest in English Language Arts, then we would be, we would be needing to find something for them as they approach their junior year. So, it's kind of like we need to address this now or address this later, but not only do they have academic needs, but they have social, emotional needs. And because of that transition from the eighth grade to the ninth grade, I think it behooves us to kind of keep that cohort intact, and, or for the most part, are the ones that can, and give them those opportunities to work with each other in that cohort, and that would also allow the teacher to meet their social, emotional needs.
I have no qualms with what you're saying there. I'm just trying to figure out why it was not taken care of the years prior, why all of a sudden it's coming up. Because I know a lot of the students that are in the gifted program, we have neglected some of their areas of need and enrichment and such like that. I'm trying to figure out why it's just coming to light now.
I, like I said, the teacher that was there, the longstanding teacher, there were never, it seemed like things were going well. I never had received a complaint at my level that the level of programming wasn't what we had desired it to be. When we did the gifted program review, there were certainly some recommendations in that review that we had on the docket to address. But with the change in the administrative personnel, that wasn't the first thing brought out. Dr. Roberts thought it would be best to address our compliance issues, and she kind of walked in while the teacher was walking out the door, so to speak, and going on her medical leave. So, that's where she started, but we just haven't gotten to the point where, and then, because the teacher was out, it kind of, it declined. It, you know, kind of diminished in terms of the programming that was offered. So, I don't, I don't know that we weren't meeting their needs before. It's just, it just, I just think that because we had, we lost a veteran teacher that was really focused on the gifted programming, and then you, you know, we had a long-term sub in the position, and another teacher who's highly energetic and wants to do well by the students, but really had, doesn't have the experience and the exposure to the gifted, that kind of all came together, you know, and made for what we have, which is just, we just need some support for them, and I think that they're gonna do a great job for students.
I'm just curious. Knowing that there was a long-term sub and another teacher in the position who was inexperienced, why wasn't there more oversight? And why is it now sort of an emergency? Now, it's, oh, wow, we have to fix this now. I, that confuses me. That confuses me. There's a lot of people there that should have been, you know, watching over these two novice teachers. I'm saying novice in this area.
And I don't know that I can answer that here, and if you'd like to have an executive session, I'd be more than happy to have, continue that conversation.
There's a couple of good points made, many good points made. Mr. Rabenowitz, you pointed out about the cost savings in regards to what was budgeted to be spent, and the savings that we'd be in for this line item. But I think there's more to it than that. I also agree with Mr. Rossi that this is an important area. I think, you know, any level of academics we're discussing certainly is important. This, we have a number of full-time, very educated, very well-paid staff at all levels, including administration, more than some other districts have, that can certainly, and are expected to certainly be providing the support to the gifted teachers. It's not the first time this district would contract with somebody, 600, now $640 a day, granted, two days a week, up to $22,000. This was not budgeted for. This, like Ms. Custer was saying, you know, all of a sudden it's emergency. We have the staff, we have the administrators, we have an administrator whose duty it is very directly to create, provide, supervise a program, Director of People's Services. I personally have worked directly for a Director of People's Services in a different district, and I would struggle to see or to believe that a plate is full or over full. This is not a district that has $22,000 laying around. I hear what Mr. Rabenowitz is saying as far as budgeted and that person leaving, so now there's those funds, but we raised taxes last year, we're looking at raising taxes potentially 2% this year. Townships, people are facing double digits, the county, they're facing almost double digits. This is one of those examples that I've talked about many times, as far as, you know, spending and likes and wants and so forth. We have the staff, let's use them, let's direct them to do what they need to do and to provide the support and to get this gifted program where it should already be by now, and for some reason it's not, and we need to get it there.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
I just have one, excuse me, one comment, and that is, my only concern is that I would like to see us not stop at the addition of a gifted language arts class. I don't, that's, I just, I know that that doesn't, it's not a perfect fit for every student in that cohort, although the one that is available in the middle school is a great class. I've had a child go through that. But my concern is that if we just pigeonhole it into one area of enrichment, that maybe it would be best for some, but not best for all. So my only concern is that we don't stop there.
And I wanted to say, Mr. Alexander, that it wasn't our intent to just stop there, and I hear what you're saying, and I also believe that the independent study can be enhanced, and we can bring some good ideas in, and also whether or not we should offer a philosophy seminar, or what else would be out there. And I'm, it's my intent that this person would lead and work with the teachers to look at some exemplary programs going on around our county, and then bring some ideas back, because there are students, like you said, that wouldn't want to take a course, but do need that support in another way, or that enrichment in another way.
Originally, I wanted to see this all done in-house, because I felt that we, Bill was saying, we had the staff, we have talented gifted teachers in the middle school, and we have talented administrators that, you know, and other teachers that could be gifted teachers to all work together. My understanding is that, your point is that there just isn't enough time to get this done. Will this administrator to be hired, temporary administrator, be working with this, I mean, for input, not just to simply say, here's the plan, now you've got to do it, are there going to be interaction?
Yeah, absolutely, and she is respected by the teachers and the administrators of the district, and also worked with Dr. Roberts in the transition, because she was here before, during the time before Dr. Roberts came. So I think that it's our intent to have a team, and obviously she's going to lead that committee, so to speak, and will bring the ideas together and vet them with our teachers, with our other administrators. And then Dr. Roberts is going to have to pick up where we leave off here, you know, with this small part of this project, and then continue the implementation, and that will be her focus area for next year, you know, as far as I'm concerned.
And the audit that was done a couple years ago, we spent $12,000 on that and came back with a lot of suggestions. Is that going to be sort of used as a roadmap for this?
Oh, she's been using it as a roadmap. I don't want you to think she hasn't, it's just that there were some places that she felt she should start. She was concerned about compliance and whether or not we would be, you know...
I'm talking about for, I apologize for any, Sylvia, yes.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're going to go right by what the suggestions were in the gifted program review, absolutely. And these were areas that we needed to address, it's just that wasn't...
Let me just add one more point. I would encourage my fellow board members to keep in mind, last week we had a issue come before us, and we, one concern was, good concern was, are we going to be setting a precedent? If we approve this, all of a sudden, we need a part-time staff person despite having more than enough full-time staff. We're going to continue a precedent, allowing this administration, this district, to just come up all of a sudden, well, we need to spend another, in this case, $22,000. We're going to pay this lady $640 a day. Why not? The spending barrels bottomless. You want to set the precedent? Vote yes. If you want to take control back, as this board should be doing, vote no.
I actually don't believe in slippery slope arguments, they're logically fallacious. So just because we approve this doesn't mean that the next thing that comes along is going to be approved simply because we approved this based on a precedent, or at least that's my view of it. I understand there's somebody in the audience that'd like to ask a question. I still have some comments that I want to make, but I'll defer them until after the question is asked. Marisa, did you want to ask something?
I do, I have a question. First of all, I think it's important to note that this is definitely not a new issue. I don't know that problem is the correct word, but it's definitely not a new issue. So I have a junior who three years ago took an advanced ELA course in the eighth grade, setting the tone for him to really need to come into an advanced ELA class in the ninth grade that was not available. So honors ELA was the option, which is what he took. I currently have a freshman who did the exact same thing, took the remarkable advanced ELA course in the eighth grade, and then transferred into honors English, which just truly does not meet the needs of the children who really excel in the eighth grade ELA. So it is a definite need. We are two parents here of students in the gifted program, and so my question, Shelley, is for you. I just want to be clear, because maybe we both missed something, but is this temporary hiring just addressing the needs of the eighth grade cohort, or are we looking at the gifted program altogether? Because I know that there are some needs that would need to be met of our current high school students, programming not available at the high school level.
When I articulated this to the board, I said a couple of things. One, that we want to provide immediate support for the, and professional development to assist the teachers that are currently in the high school. So we have a long-term sub, and we have another veteran teacher that just needs that support. Michael already started working with the teacher, having had some experience himself over the professional development days, but I need someone that can be there, boots on the ground, working with the teachers, that has the time to commit to that, because I do agree with you that we have teachers, or students rather, currently in the high school, that we want to give better support to, more support to. The teachers are eager to do that, we just need to get them some support. So that's one thing. One, I wanted to implement a gifted English Language Arts honors-weighted course to address some of the needs, like you said, when the students come from the eighth grade to the ninth grade, but not only does it address their academic needs, but it's also a way to address their social emotional needs. And then also to research designs and models for gifted programming, and utilize the resources to support the gifted learning. So look outside the box, outside of Potts Grove, what are other schools doing that have good gifted program, exemplary program? What does that look like? Now, thinking to the future, what would we like to see in the Potts Grove School District? And then let's start the planning for that, so that we can beef up and enhance what we're already doing. Those are really the three key things. And then also, if time, start looking at the scope and sequence from the high school to the middle school to the elementary school, because I think there needs to be some better articulation there, and we also have a new teacher at the elementary level who's trying to learn and become better at what they're doing. And I think bringing those teachers together on a more regular basis, and sharing of those ideas, and looking at the cohesiveness across the program.
Shelley, I just want to clarify what you just said, and in relation to Marisa's question, because, well, let me just start with a comment, and the comment is, if we were just adding a gifted ELA course, if that was the only thing we were doing, I would not be in support of this particular spend, because I think that we would have the staff to be able to handle that, if that was the only thing that needed to be done. And I'm willing to bet you would probably agree with me, if that was the only thing to be done. So, you know, and I do remember you saying to me at some point during our discussions about this, that, you know, that we have an immediate need beyond the incoming eighth graders with the gifted programming in the high school, and that Sylvia is going to be focusing on addressing those immediate needs. You mentioned a couple of other things, but in general, the programming for the existing gifted students in the high school. I just want to clarify that that is a major...
Yes, and the teachers are very excited to work with someone that will help lead them. They really are, they want to do a great job, and I know they will, I'm confident.
So, I didn't want to cut you off, did you have anything else? So, I, in case you can't tell from my, some of the comments I've made, I am in favor of this particular spend. And I will add that the gifted program, when I became board president, and even during the election time, was one of three areas that I personally considered very important to make changes to and address this particular issue, but not only this particular issue. So for me, I'm actually quite thrilled that we're moving forward with some of these ideas, and that we're going to give it the attention that it deserves. Before we end the discussion on this, I just wanted to, don't worry, I have a couple of pages here, but I'm not reading a couple of pages to you. But I did do a little research, as I like to do, on gifted programming, and, you know, the part that concerns me most about what we're doing is the if time allows part, because time never allows. So when time doesn't allow, we're still not going to address some of the issues that I've raised previously in relation to state guidelines for gifted programming, and the road we've been traveling down across the board with our gifted programming in relation to those guidelines, which, it's hard to summarize in a single sentence, but the way I would summarize it is aligning gifted programming with standards, but specifically standards that students are tested on, which, and in my opinion, there's a movement in the state to turn gifted services and programming into sort of a super test prep program. And I couldn't more vehemently disagree with that. There's nothing in the code that has changed, it's just these guidelines that some people that work for the state, or in some cases liaise with the state, have put out and are teaching to teachers across the state in training classes, and I've become very familiar with it, it's all out there for people who are crazy enough to want to spend hours going through the material. So the first thing I wanted to say is a little snippet here from Gifted Education Press Quarterly, where it says, "The standards do not define the nature of advanced work for students who meet the standards prior to the end of high school. For those students, advanced work in such areas as literature, composition, language, and journalism should be available. The standards set grade-specific standards but do not define the intervention methods or materials necessary to support students who are well below or well above grade-level It is beyond the scope of the standards to define the full range of supports appropriate for English language learners and students with special needs." So that's the first point I wanted to make. In other words, the standards really are a minimum for our students to achieve, but gifted learning isn't about complying with minimums. And some schools in our area are effectively converting gifted education to meeting minimums, and I could not disagree more with that, and I urge the administration, as they go through this, to look at what we're doing and adjust. And I'm going to skip this other thing, but I have, I'm going to send this to you, Shelley. It's from the National Surveys of Gifted Programs Executive Summary 2014, and it has a great summary page implications of what we're talking about. So I would appreciate if you would take a look at it. And along those lines, then, last, I think it's very important that the board has representation in this committee that you're talking about. And I have a volunteer from the board who is willing to make himself available to go along with site visits to other schools, and participate to the fullest extent possible without getting in the way of the work of the committee. And I thought about trying to make a motion to make that happen, but I would rather just say, let's just agree that Jim Lapik is going to be that representative, assuming you still are willing to do so.
I don't know if others should be as well, because...
Well, I think anybody should be allowed to, but you volunteered to, and you have a lot of knowledge of gifted education, so I think it would be great. I want the board to be statist on this and not be surprised at the end of the game. So that's my personal goal with this. And the end of the game may not be when Sylvia leaves, based on what you're telling me. So, you know, it's very important to me. So that's all I have to say on this. Does anybody else have anything else they want to say?
I have one more comment. I'm going to vote absolutely in support of this. I know that our program, I know many of the students, of course, that are in the gifted program, and I've known for years that it's been lacking, so I'm kind of surprised to hear that it's just coming up now. But my issue and concern is going to go back, I'm hoping to hear for some assurances of accountability, that we've had this issue, and time being an issue, where we had to go outside to do a review, we paid $12,000. We didn't have the manpower to do that. Now we're at the point where, again, we have to ask for help from another outside person because we don't have the time, and my concern is, after this is all done, of not being in the same boat a year from now, and saying, okay, we don't have the time to complete all of the necessary procedures or necessary programs or whatever. I just want to hear from the administration that we definitely are going to be accountable to make sure, to whomever is accountable, to make sure that this program works, we're not going to need a year or two years from now, another person. We're going to get this program on track and in the budget that we have right now, after this is taken care of.
I think, Mr. Leach, I can tell you that the things that we are recommending, you know, we're going to be able to follow through and get those things done. I said this all along to Mr. Rabenowitz and everybody else, that we're not going to fulfill everything in the gifted quality program review in this short project, we're going to fulfill the things that we said that we were going to fulfill in the memorandum that I outlined and went over this evening, and then Dr. Roberts is going to have to carry this through. And, you know, we are a small district, we are, as much as you might think we're over administratively staffed, if you did a little bit of research... staffed, if you did a little bit of research and looked around at some of the other neighboring districts, we really are short-staffed in terms of our administration and what we have to accomplish. So from time to time, we have had additional assistance with projects. This would be a project, in my opinion. But it's certainly a cost save for the district to have a project here and there as opposed to having another administrator. And when we had the downturn in the economy, we forfeited an administrator at that point, which I really think it was a loss to the district in terms of being able to support curriculum and instruction. And it really, really made our district office support very thin. And, you know, one of the things that has come up in this short time that we've had two new administrators in the People's Services Department is, you know, the needs for special education in and of itself, beyond, not including people services, special education is beyond one person. When you're talking about over 650 students who have IEPs, currently, Mrs. Pacito is the one person that is overseeing all of those IEPs, and it's, and what we're finding is it's too much. So we could come to you and we say, we need to add another supervisor of special education, but we're not doing that. What we're doing is, I'm now giving that, Mara Roberts is picking up one of the buildings for IEPs to lessen the load for Mrs. Pacito, which we didn't even go over tonight, how overtaxed that is and how we have to be careful to dot our i's and cross our t's and to make sure that our students, we're meeting our students' needs. So she's picking that up, and then we're giving this special project to someone else because at this point, we have a lot of needs and we have a lot of balls in the air, and we don't always have enough administrative support to handle all of those things. But yes, I am committing to the things that we said we would do.
I have researched it. I've lived it. And I respectfully disagree. Bottom line is, just from what we're hearing here, just looking at the facts as they're being presented, we have people in their full-time roles with the job descriptions of things that should be done and you're saying weren't done. The ball was dropped, and now we're being asked, we're asking the community, chuck up 22,000 bucks to get this thing fixed. I will be voting no. Let me be very, very clear that my no vote is in no way representative of a lack of commitment to the gifted program. In no way is that the case. I fully support the gifted program in every other academic and non-academic program in this district, but I will be voting no.
Just move on. To action items.
I recommend that you approve the professional staff items as submitted.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
I recommend that you approve the support staff items as submitted.
Motion in a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
I recommend that you approve the supplemental special payments as submitted.
Motion in a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nine, nothing.
I recommend that you authorize the administration to approve the independent contractor agreement with Dr. Sylvia Sanfilippo Kong for special education gifted services as presented.
So moved. Have a motion in a second. We've just had a long discussion about this. Does anybody else have any other comments?
Shelley, is she available right away?
I would think by next Monday, we can probably get started.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries seven, two.
I recommend that you approve the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Membership Budget as presented.
Have a motion in a second. I have a question. It's really, I know the answer, but for the public. The budget has it changed from last year?
No. Zero increase.
So we have a zero increase. The MCIU provides countless services to this school district and is very well-run. On being a former board member on the MCIU, I'm a big proponent of what they do, not just for us, but for the county and for special needs students, pre-K. It's really a great organization, in my opinion. So that said, are there any other questions or comments?
I have to do a tally vote to take with me, I think, to the MCIU tomorrow, or else I give it to Lori, I'm not sure. I have to do a tally vote per member for yes or no.
Want to pass, so, you know, if we're, hopefully we're nine zero, and that makes the tally easy, but, so...
Tally vote, they could just call it out. Did you have a question?
Is there anybody going to vote no on this? We're all going to vote yes for this.
I'm going to vote yes, but I do have a question.
Okay.
In regards to this. I agree with everything you just shared, Mr. Rabinoz, but looking over this, not contract, but membership budget, in regards to the Office of Technology Services, are we using this to the max? I ask that because we quite often hear that expenditures in this district in regards to technology, and I'm certainly not anti-technology, but I want to make sure we're using what we're already paying for as well. For example, just a month or two or three ago, we, or last week maybe, we talked about and it all runs together, the E-Rate, an issue with E-Rate, I see the IU does that, consortium of grant writing, purchasing of hardware and software. Are we using this part of the IU to the max?
Bill should speak to that, because...
We are actually one of the most engaged districts in the county with the Office of Technology Services at the intermediate unit. I can say that we're with a great deal of confidence, we are part of the agenda planning team, we're very active. We use all the services that are appropriate for us and for our needs, and we usually go to the IU first. We're a part of the IU Internet Consortium. So specifically to the E-Rate, we're already taking advantage of their free E-Rate services, which we participate in as a district member of the Internet Consortium. So that covers our broadband internet services, but telephones and other eligible services, that's what we discussed a couple of, it was probably back in Janu, December, I think, when we asked for the, to add the intermediate unit as our E-Rate consultant. That's for the additional services, are not included under what was listed there.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any other, we already have questions asked. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Makes your tally easy.
I recommend that you authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with CCIU Child Development Center as presented.
Have a motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments?
I'm very, very familiar with, oh, is this CDC? Yeah, CDC. And they have an excellent program and a broad range of programs there. I'm presuming you're talking about the CDC with the CCIU. But the distance, does Montgomery County not have anything that would meet the students' needs so far away to drive to cultural each day?
I really can't discuss that here, but I commune it's an IEP decision. It's not my decision to make, it's an IEP team decision.
And again, we're being asked to vote on something, though. So I do hear what you're saying, it's an IEP decision that we, or the LEA at, that we have an LEA at, and where, that we do approve ultimately placements. And while, like I said, CDC's an excellent program, it's hard for me to imagine, not knowing the situation, nor should I know the situation, that Montgomery, there's nothing closer for this child, a Montgomery County resident.
I think that there might be something closer, but what happens is you have to negotiate with the parent and the special ed department, and they work together. And this was the placement that was selected that would meet the students' needs, that was open to both parties, and that's how placements get decided. So I can't, I mean, if you could not approve it, and then we could be in litigation over it, I don't think that would be what you'd want to do.
All right. Let's, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero.
I recommend that you approve the payment of invoices listed above.
Motion in a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero.
I recommend that you approve the conference attendance as presented.
I have a quick question about B.
B?
Yeah, B. We're sending some, we're going to pay someone 300, I mean, again, I know it's only $398 and such, but still, to an embroidery machine training? It seems kind of odd.
Well, I mean, we can't provide that kind of training to our family and consumer science teachers, so if they find something outside that is in line with what they're doing and trying to accomplish, we want to support their professional development.
Yeah, YouTube.
Yeah, well, I, this brings up a topic that I've just been waiting for opportunity to bring up, but I think we need to be reviewing the courses that are being offered and provided at the middle school and high school. This is one of the courses that I have strong concern about, that were, where I can't help but to wonder if that time wouldn't be used more valuable. I'm very impressed with the fancy-wancy sewing machines that are in there, I was in there one day. Quite impressive, but I don't believe a single student will make use of that after sixth, seventh, eighth grade. And I'm not going to, I think we should vote against this, and I think we need to look at this more closer if we want to be spending the money on this type of, I think we need to discuss it a later time.
I actually just have a question. Is FACS a requirement for us to offer to students? I know when I was in...
No, I mean, off the top of my head, I'd have to look, but Chapter Four doesn't specifically articulate family and consumer science. I know phys ed's a requirement, health, but the other offerings for encore, you know, we have discretion there, so, I mean, yeah, we don't have to offer.
You know, I'm not going to lie, I'm not a big FACS fan personally, but I'm not willing to, to, without more research, state whether it's worthwhile or not. I think it's worthwhile. I'm sure it is worthwhile to a lot of students. But if we're going to consider it, it should be done probably as part of the curriculum committee process. And, you know, for the time being, and for a long time in the past, we've offered this course, and we have a teacher who is seeking professional development. So, Bill, if you want, we can pull B out, so you can vote no for it.
Let's pull three out if we can. Just do, I mean, vote for them separately is what I'm saying.
Sure, why not?
I have, I just have a quick comment, too, that I respectfully disagree with you, Mr. Parker, that you have to provide learning opportunities for all students, you don't know, you have no crystal ball to look into and say, not one person would benefit from using that. There could be some people that latch on to that and think, wow, this is the greatest thing ever, and could take using something like that into adulthood and into their retirement years. So I'm all for it.
Please let the public comment, just very quickly.
Sure.
The technology fair that you provided at the high school, gosh, maybe two years ago, Mr. Wagman, Gloria Fritz was there with this embroidery machine, and I want to tell you something, it was unbelievable. It was unbelievable. It truly was. I mean, there was a line lined up of people watching what she was doing. And personal opinions are certainly very well-respected, but FACS is a very worthwhile course. They're teaching very worthwhile skills, so perhaps it's not gifted education, which gets a lot of focus, but it is absolutely a very worthwhile service we're providing to our students. That course has a lot of merit, and there are a lot of students who benefit greatly from what's learned in there.
And I'd like to just piggyback off that because it's shameful for us to say that we really don't care about this class. You know, we're about all the students. So I'm really saddened to hear that comment being made about our students.
Patty, I...
No, I'm going to respond, please, because I made the comment. I feel like I'm, you know, trumping, you're trump on somebody else. And I got 30 seconds here, thank you, moderator. Let me be very, I fully support FACS. I think they do a great job in there, I had the opportunity to sub in there. I love the cooking, for example. I think the kids are going to make use of that. That's the only part I saw, but I know they do other things. Talking about budgeting, I think is very important, that would, seems to me, would fall under that. I don't agree with, and again, it's not for now, but I don't agree with that sewing. There's a lot of things we could be doing. We could have an auto shop and having all the kids experiencing that, because you never know, bless you, what somebody's going to latch on to. But we need to decide as a board at the appropriate time what we're going to offer and what we're not going to offer. We can't offer every possibility. But let me be clear, FACS as a whole, there's a lot of positives to that program. I don't agree with the sewing piece. So don't put words in my saying, in my mouth, saying, we don't care about this.
All right. Okay. Now, look, I just want to clarify what I said, and then let's just move on. We're talking about a training class for a teacher here.
Correct.
I probably shouldn't have made my personal feelings about this course known, but I also made it clear that I would never support removing a class that had value to the students. And somebody suggested that maybe we should look at it, and if they want to look at it, that's fine, but not without all due consideration to the value and as well as the alternative, which is something else that might be more valuable or might be less valuable. So you want to, we need to pull these out, so we, have we even done a motion yet?
No.
No. Mr. President, can I say one more thing?
Please.
Please, thank you. For us to sit here and say, well, and Bill, I'm going to just use what you said, and I'm not going to, I'm going to say it exactly the way you said it, to sit here and say, well, we could pull the sewing out and do auto shop, well, what makes one more important than the other? I have two daughters, both of them went through FACS, and especially my youngest daughter, who now lives with me, I'm a single dad. She latched on to that, it gave her something to believe in and something to strive for. I think everything from sewing to this machine, to, this teacher wants to go and learn something to bring here and pass on to, and further her course. Who are we to say that we should deny this teacher a learning process? She's still learning, too, the teacher. And to have her go learn, to teach our students something, I think both male and female, because there are both male and females that take this course, is invaluable. I mean, we've got a lot of broken families in this district, and a lot of these kids don't have the opportunity to be taught by anybody how to do these simple things, sewing, cooking, checkbook, making a bed, whatever it is. And I think it's very, very, I think out of all the things we do, it's one of the most valuable things that we can teach these kids, is how to move on in life and how to get through life. So we can pull them out, but, and we can vote on them, let's vote on them.
That's great, let's vote on them. Let's vote on A, please. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Motion, do we have a second? Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Motion for B?
Motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries seven, two. And then C? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries eight, one. Motion carries eight one.
And committee reports. Oh, I'm sorry. I messed up. I was hoping we were in committee. Authorize the administration to develop an additional course offering English Language Arts Gifted as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
program, and then decide, and if she recommends it, then we go with it.
Well, I mean, you can do what you want, but as I explained before, I mean, I personally met with the teachers, and we looked at the students' needs, and I believe there's an identified need for those students coming up, and therefore, that was my recommendation to proceed with this. And she will work with them to, you know, develop it and figure out, well, how does that look differently from an honors ninth grade course, and how are we meeting their needs? That's what she's going to do, but I want the authority to do it, because the course booklet has already been published and presented, and we have meetings coming up with our gifted parents, and if the board should approve this, then the building principal, Dr. Ziegler, and our teacher at the middle school, Deb Frasco, will meet with the parents, and then for those who they deem appropriate, they'll make this recommendation, then we can do a hand schedule change and place them in that course, which is why I have it here for you to discuss now. The time is of the essence for this piece.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'll be voting yes in that case.
Let's move on to committee reports until the members of the board that are coming back, come back, and then we'll, we'll move forward with this one. Please. Can we do that?
Fine by me. Tonight at six thirty, the Policy Committee met, and just a synopsis of what we reviewed. Three policies that were under review for the past month or two, we went over again. The first policy was oh oh five for the organization. This is where we established our committees, and we've been through this, this policy for the last two meetings. This time around, we just had some very minor wording, and I didn't, I didn't write down the exact wording, because they'll be posted now for, for public review, but we had some just very minor wording changes. There were no changes to the intent of the policy, grammar corrections and things like that, so we're, we made a few additional red lines, and we'll be able to post that for public review shortly. Policy two seventeen, which is the requirement, the graduation requirements, we reviewed again what, what we want to do around the requirement to use the Keystone exam results as a graduation requirement. So if I, if I don't explain this exactly right, jump right in, please, Shelley and Bill, but as of right now, the state's put a moratorium on requiring passing of the Keystone exams for high school graduation. The question is, does Potts Grove wish to require the Keystones as, as a part of the graduation requirements as they have in the past? If we follow the state moratorium, there's a concern that this test won't be taken as seriously. If the test scores go down, we could, it could affect our school performance profile and things like that. We also, I guess, really, we need to research and be more clear on whether the state requires at all that students take the test. So if they don't even require that the students take the test, it would, it would make it especially difficult for us to call it a graduation requirement. So the committee agreed, we need to do some more research before we decide whether we're going to stay with having the Keystones as a graduation requirement. We'll discuss this again at the next policy meeting, and we'll keep the community abreast of our discussions and what we find out, and then, again, as, as this policy becomes finalized, we'll post it for public comment. Third, policy number two forty-nine, the bullying and cyberbullying policy. So last, last month in discussions about this policy, the committee had concerns that the state sets some very specific criteria for what constitutes bullying. We have a requirement as a district to report back to the state how many incidents of bullying occur in each school. So our concern was that if a, if an incident, if a particular incident didn't meet the specific definition of bullying, which states that it has to happen repeatedly over a period of time, and a lot of other specific criteria, would we be quick to dismiss an issue because it didn't meet those criteria of being bully, bullied? The district does have policy on harassment that we believe covers those one-off situations, which tend to occur just as much, if not more, as bullying. The concern was the semantics of the word bullying, there's a stigma around the word, and if something happens one time, a parent or a student would tend to believe they've been bullied and go down the wrong route as far as how to address it. So we've added some language to the policy to, to cover that, in saying that one-off incidents, instances will be addressed, and we, I believe we want to put a reference to the harassment policy into the bullying policy. So because a parent is going to go directly to the bullying policy if they feel like their, their child's been bullied, so we want to make sure that we're pointing them in the right direction if they don't find what they need when they go to this policy, that they know there's another route. So again, that's just clarifying, to make sure that these policies aren't just there for the sake of being there, but that they're useful for the people who go to them as a There was a lot of conversation about those three policies, and we ran out of time. We had some new things to discuss that didn't make it, but will make it to the next meeting, and those are the policy for board representation, specifically based on recommendations at the last board meeting, to consider introducing a second student board rep, that would be a junior, I believe, and, and have them kind of spend a year prepping to be the actual senior student board rep, so that they can be more effective. That's based on other districts and the way they do it, and so we're going to look at changing our policy to, to implement that. And then the second was the changes in the volunteering procedures that happened in 2015, so we want to make sure that we're compliant with state requirements there. So those will be covered at the next meeting, even though they were on the docket for this one, we didn't get to them.
And I just want to add, if you don't mind, Matt, relation to the, the phys ed requirement, I actually read from a conversation that I had with a parent via instant message today, leaving out the names, but the information that was shared, the parent had expressed some legitimate concern about how difficult it is to schedule phys ed in a robust schedule with a lot of AP classes and science labs, and one of the things that, that we've been assured is that, that the new independent study class, or independent, do you call it a class?
Independent study.
Independent study is designed largely for this situation, so that a student who can't squeeze it in otherwise is still getting the appropriate physical education, but not being forced to drop, you know, an important academic class. So while the requirement is going to stay at, with that point four nine, or be increased to match the practice, however you want to look at it, we're offering this alternative now, and hopefully that meets everybody's needs as it relates to phys ed. So, but we still haven't passed it. It's still, yeah, it still needs further work. And now, moving back to the, to the action item that we did not vote on, we did have a motion and a second on the additional course offering for ELA. So all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. New business.
I do have some new business. I was actually honored to attend the Dr. Ken Ginsberg seminar, which was awesome here, and if any parent gets a chance, Google it and look up Lighthouse Parenting. It's absolutely amazing. This guy spoke for over two hours, and he spoke on building resilience in children, and he was just right on in today's society, so I encourage everybody to look that up. It's a good read. And I also like to thank the Pottstown Health and Wellness Foundation for sponsoring these, this educational event, and then what they did with the grant that they received, they actually bought enough of two books that they gave all the audience. So I, I've got a good reads, too, so if anybody wants to be next, I'll hand my books over. But definitely look him up, because it, it really enlightened me, my thought process as a grandmother now, but Dr. Ken Ginsberg, a good read.
Rick, I have one thing, if it's okay. I just wanted to kind of communicate something that's going on over the Western Center to the, to the rest of the board here. On Thursday, I'm making a trip with the center director, Chris Morrison, up to these Middle Bucks Technical Institute to observe their sports medicine program. So it's been recommended, and it's under development at the Western Center to put together a program in sports medicine. There's a, there's, there's been a few courses over the last few years that have just, the, the enrollments fallen off, and just the outlook as far as those careers has started to dim. So the, the Western Center is constantly looking for what they can do to, to better serve the students of today in trying to prepare them for a fruitful career in the technical field, and, and really, I mean, if you look at the numbers, the percentage of kids that they send into two and four-year colleges is, is very high, based on the, the education that they receive over there, and this, this sports medicine program is something that's really exciting to the, to the JOC over at the Western Center. So far, they've looked at their partnering with the Rothman Institute, the YMCA, and more to come, so they're making some trips. I know Chris was out at Penn State today, I believe, observing their program, and then Thursday, out at the Middle Bucks Technical Institute, and I'm sure that the three of us will have more to report as things go on. I just wanted to let everybody know that that's something that's very exciting going on over there. They're looking at remodeling an area to set up for this program and, and make it just a flagship program. It's, it's very forward-thinking. There's not a lot of these programs in the state right now. I think this will be the third, or maybe there's three, and this will be the fourth. There needs to be ten total in order for the state to actually put their stamp on a set curriculum for a course like this, so the, the Western Center here, if we move forward, and I think we will, will be one of those, one of those centers that's actually paving, paving the, the way for, for future programs, so it's, it's something very interesting that's going on over there.
I wanted to bring up some issues that have been brought to my attention concerning the standard-based grading that was passed, I believe it was last June, by the board. I'm hearing from kids, parents, teachers, that there's nothing standard about it right now, and quite a few of the kids that I have spoken to are very unhappy with the ninety-ten split. I personally feel that it's sending the wrong message, because kids are not doing their homework, because it only counts for ten percent. So they can not turn in one piece of homework the entire year and still get a ninety in their class, if they're good test takers, if they understand the, the curriculum, and they can still get an A, and they haven't done any homework. There's instances where large packets are being sent home and worked on, and only to find out that it's only worth ten percent. And so, you know, two, three hours goes into doing something, and it doesn't change their grade at all. There's this whole test retaking. Kids aren't studying for their tests because they know they can just retake it, so why study, study for, for the first time around? I would really like to look into this as a board and just do some more research and find out if this is actually the way that we need to move forward, or if we need to revisit and revise, because as of right now, I'm not seeing success with it, and I would love to get input from others also.
And I have one other last item I'd like to bring some attention to, for the administration to possibly look at and possibly become a discussion item in the future as well. We have something that's new this year with the high school called the Pride Period. I could tell you, you guys need to look at what's going on with the Pride Period for the parents that are, have students in the high school, and the student itself, the Pride Period is nothing more than a, let's get together and either do homework, let's just joke around. It is absolutely not following its intent. The teachers themselves are just saying, just sign in here, then you can go wherever you want, I don't, I don't care. That's just unacceptable, my idea. The idea was a good idea on what it was going to do, but it's, the implementation is absolutely faulty at this point.
Well, Mr. Leach, just to respond to that, that is one of the strategies that's in the high school's School Improvement Plan, the School Innovation Plan. So our cycle is coming up to be reviewed now in March, so that's certainly going to be a topic for conversation with Dr. Ziegler about what they are finding, and then, you know, with your input that you just provided, I can probe further and, you know, provide the feedback that you're seeing, and we can assess what's happening and why, if, you know, if things aren't being implemented as they had designed, and what we need to do differently. So I will be following up with him when we, we had that, it's, it's coming up in the next couple of weeks. Okay.
And, you know, regarding your comments, Ashley, I also have a lot of concerns about the way things appear to be going with, with grading this year, although it's, it is year one of a two-year plan, and I would just say that, that I agree that we really need to have a lot more conversation about it. No matter what you do with grading, I think somebody's going to be unhappy, but, but at the same time, I, too, am hearing from a lot of parents about this, and- And you know what, anybody with a middle schooler or a high schooler on this board or in the audience is also personally experiencing some issues. And I would definitely concur that I'm seeing it myself in addition to what we're hearing from parents. So I don't know, you know, if the curriculum meeting next week is the time to talk about it. We already have some portion of grading on the agenda, but I also fear it could pretty much fill up the entire agenda in very short order. So I just want to concur that this is something that really does need to get some attention, because the year is finishing quickly, and if we need to make adjustments, then time is running out.
And I would like to encourage any parents that do have this issue and have any questions about it to follow the command. You know, go to the teacher, go to the principal, you know, follow the protocol. You know, just get the word out, you know, because if they don't know it, they can't fix it and help it before it comes to us. Try to go through the chains.
Hold on.
Just add a comment, that's a very good, just to go off of what Ms. Grim was saying. It's a very good point. Anything that any of us hears, hopefully has, certainly the teachers and principals are aware of. You know, maybe you're making us aware, but as long as they also shared it with the principals, you know, and they could know what's happening in their buildings in addressing these concerns.
Well, in some of the cases, the teachers at least have been consulted, and I've passed some of that information on to Mrs. Viola. So I'll just say that I think the issue is larger than chain of command here. Any other new business? Adjourn.